...the United States of America, a considered republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, evergreen, and just as well.
All right. All right, we want to like to announce we had an executive session six thirty and it was person, no awards, motions approved to expand the jurisdiction period ending February twenty ninth. Does that have a motion? Second?
Second.
Questions?
Yes, I do. I'm not understanding this new format. I don't see where the amounts are actually. If you could, if you have time to ask earlier, but for instance, I'm looking at the bottom of Greenwood, of course, and I-
The second column is an amount.
Two ten, like two ten point four eight. Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, motion second all favor. opposed?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries one, yeah, opposed. Okay, motion to approve for council events, February seventeenth, on motion.
So move.
Second.
Second.
Questions? All favor? Opposed? Motion carries, have a seat. Okay, citizens be heard. Do you have any citizens?
Hi.
Excuse me, I'll explain to you, your first time here. Come on up to the name and address. We keep it usually a four minute-
Five minutes.
Five minutes, I'm sorry.
Less than that.
Yeah, I mean-
My name is Michelle Patel. My address is five eight six Lloyd Avenue, which is Downingtown mailing address, but I'm sure you realize it's not Downingtown.
That's fine.
I am here on behalf of the St. James preschool parent teachers organization. We would like to place some signs over the next few days, starting tomorrow and coming down on Sunday to add to-
I'm sorry, is this the sign you're coming in for? We know the two paths. We can give you a chance to do much talk during that. I think then we'll know instead of going back and forth without a god law. Is that okay?
Sure, so sit down now.
Sure.
You want the sign, right?
What?
You want the sign.
We want.
All right.
That's fine.
It's all right.
You're on the agenda, so this is, there are citizens to be heard. That's where people come up and just to, if they're not on the agenda, and just to talk with council. But when you're on the agenda, you can just wait for your item to come up and then, and then you get a response to that.
Okay, sure. All right.
May I say?
I take your call. Enjoy your sun. Thank you, thank you.
Wait a minute.
You'll, you'll know. We'll tell you when it's out of there.
Is anyone else? Sure, come on up.
Hello? My name is Leanne O'Neal. I live at two oh one Meadow Lake Drive in Downingtown, Downing Township, with Downingtown address. I'm here tonight because I've lived on the four hundred block of Grand Avenue for fourteen years. I'm here as a long time resident of Downingtown, but also as an Eastward Elementary School columnist, community member, and also a parent. On February twentieth, my family and I went to the Eastward playground for our two and a half year old to play. And when we stepped foot on the playground, it was very disheartening to see the condition that it's become. It looks like there was little known maintenance on this playground. I think it was built by the community in nineteen ninety-one. Wood structures are severely splintered. There's obstacles that used to be suspended that are now just in the ground, immovable. There's also jeans that were taut and out of use. And the biggest concern they have is there were rusty nails sticking out of the structure. I have a picture that I can show you if you guys are interested.
They, they actually came in, the principal came in when we were doing the fundraising now to try to replace-
I do understand that.
Yes.
I'm basically just coming as a concerned community member. My, my issue that I see right now that they're running into is they've been stuck at twelve percent for fundraising since March of twenty fifteen. I guess I looked at their website and they're up at sixteen percent now, and I just kind of feel like the process is very slow. While I understand that it's not the borough council's responsibility for the fundraising, as a community and being part of the community, I guess I'm coming to ask for some guidance or suggestions to get the community involved to help do something in addition to the money that they have, the funders that they have.
We have a park and recreation commission that we are striving to get some fundraising going.
Okay.
Would like to come and speak to us, that'd be great.
Absolutely.
It's the third Thursday here at seven o'clock.
Okay.
I would also suggest that, I, I've seen you, there have been several fundraisers. Movie, Anathor Movie, they had the fundraiser and the donations were accepted.
Right.
And then last fall, there was Coach Bingo.
Right.
Which obviously there, obviously the only male in a room about a hundred women there. And it wasn't bad. I, I just say you gotta keep that, you gotta keep doing it and maybe have something a little for the guys, you know, or something.
I personally have not. I'm not on playground committee. Again, I'm here as just a community member that just so happened to be on playground and saw all of this. I did research, I did, you know, reach out to people that are involved with the, the community for the playground. I just thought that maybe bringing up the topic, which I'm sure you're all very well aware of, it sounds like, to maybe see if there's something the community members can do to also-
We actually had a meeting and they asked us for ideas.
Right.
We did have one meeting with them. I, I, I think you're probably better off going to the school board and talking to them. It's on their property and possibly they could help you a little more. But we did have a brainstorm meeting over at the administration building, several of us, and we offered whatever few ideas we had and-
Support for grants and things like that.
We kind of kind of steered them down, all of you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thanks for coming in, anyone else?
Can you leave time? What do you think we can do about the broken jeans and the rest of the nails?
Hi, I'm Jack Moir. I live pretty far side of Newland Downingtown, which is in the west end of town. And my question is, when or is anything going to be done about the flood control in that end of town? Anybody got any hot tail and suggestions?
Talk to Tom, the code's off, small Tom.
I believe that's Coopwood Run, it's just right there. And it's a multi-billion dollar project to try and do anything on that creek.
Is it worse than it's been the past? Is it worse now that something happened?
Last rain-
Every time it rains.
So it's been, it's been for decades or this, in the past year or?
It's getting worse.
I hear you, okay.
You seem to be getting storms from that down before. I mean, it's unbelievable, that heavy rain and-
Well, my question is, is anything going to be done? I'm just looking for a yes or a no.
One thing, so a couple things, the, so there's flooding in that section of town. I know our group are just now, but it floods, but it drizzles and then it shuts on the street. And there's lots of sections we see in town. We've tried to take steps in long-term planning, the way we apply for grants in anything we do to have things that address drainage and/or flooding in sections of town. It would be economically impossible to spend five hundred million dollars to cause to keep down flooding worth of bottom of a great-
I'm with her on that.
However, a couple things Tom's done over this time here and others is, is the basin on Lincoln Avenue dredging out Green Street when the mills-
That's the east end. I'm talking about the west end.
I know, I know. I'm giving, I'm trying to give you a macro answer on how we're moving through and trying to address these in each section of town. The borough is constantly looking for opportunities to apply for grants or to look for funding to improve drainage in this community. It's, you know, just every neighborhood in downtown floods, Johnson Town as well, and will continue to find ways to. Some things will work on the east end, we gotta find ways to make it work on the west end of town.
Tom, it's hard. Most of that water comes from right up that end. Coopwood Run and the railroad tracks. See, it comes from the other end, so it's very hard for us to control the water that's coming from up above. So, so people up above don't get it, we get it, and we, we do all the things we, we just did up there at the, at the west end with the curves, the thing, because a lot of it's coming down and flooding a couple neighborhoods in the back. So we're always trying to, to, to work with the flooding every chance we get when we do do a project. So that, I think that's gonna help those street trade behind there because it was cutting through, running down, flooding those. So we try to channel it, but immediately all the books know there isn't something specific for that block.
How long do you think it might take?
I have no idea. He approves, he looks for grants and, and stuff all the time, and that's what we, we try to work with. They, they search, Steve and Tom, and they, they search and try to get grants and all. Could I tell you a year or twenty years? I type in on-
I took the, talked to Tom about this mess. He's been up there a few times, he's seen it.
Yes, yes.
And it just seems like nothing ever gets done. They talk to people and then, we're gonna look at it, we're gonna do this, but nothing ever happens, so I'm just waiting for something to happen.
Well, what, what do you think, Tom? Is there something that can be done or is this kind of something that, that's really, it's, it's a bad issue because we, there's nothing, we're powerless to do anything about the flood waters and really the people, the homeowners are gonna have to mitigate themselves? Or are there things we're looking into, like what, what?
DEP told me last year, maybe two years already that they're working on a permit for municipalities to do stream improvements. Really need to dredge the stream and do improvements. If DEP won't go and make it any lower, there's nothing to do cost effectively. So it's tough. And, you know, I kind of hope the DEP will change the rules, have access to those-
Guys, can I, and if you're gonna talk, let's get it addressed first and we'll address it one at a time.
Okay.
So we don't have this yelling and screaming. Let's come through the center and say, well, the questions will come here, the questions will come through there. So please, I ask you just to keep a little bit of-
Sure, sure.
A little bit of work.
Mr., excuse me, point of order, Mr. President, you let everybody speak, but as soon as I try to speak, you're saying-
No, Andy, I was interrupting you, he's stopping.
I stopped Josh, I'm sorry.
He was talking to me, yeah.
Oh, okay.
If you feel slight, yes.
Yes, I do feel slight.
So go ahead.
So, what you're saying then is that it really at the mercy, he's at the mercy of DEP right now, but the only thing that's really gonna fix it is for the dredging and DEP is-
Well, that's the most cost effective way to get more capacity out of it. New culverts under the highway and under the railroad.
Oh, yeah.
Millions of dollars. You know, and property acquisition through that apartment complex, there's things you could do to improve the hydraulics and keep the water elevation a little lower, but once you hit the bridge downstream on Pennsylvania Avenue, and the big floods, it's still gonna flood.
How about a basin somewhere, like you put on the other end of town?
That, that was about a million and a half project, but it's not in the borough. A basin would even upstream in the neighboring township.
We have to stop it up there before it gets too expensive.
Well, if I'm not mistaken, you own property up there. You own water plant. Wouldn't that be a good place for a basin right along the creek that floods?
Is that on the creek?
Creek goes right past it.
She put him on there.
Fifty?
Can we run that up the cycle?
Sure.
And we'd have to look for the funding and all, try to-
Oh, yeah, I understand that, but it's a thought, that's, I haven't heard anything, that's what I'm looking for.
And Tom, you're, you're gonna keep working on all the, I mean, do we have a meeting today? We don't?
All right, thank you.
Yes, thank you, that's good.
Good idea, hopefully, anybody else? All right, thank you, guys. Next, we're gonna have some new business, downtown library grant applications.
Yeah, just so you're aware, there's no actual tonight needed. Every year, you know, the borough and water authority have been rotating on the CRP grant, for county grant. For the past few years, the library's been asking for funding to finish off the outside of their building, connect the road to the park road, and do some landscaping and finish the outside. They have about a two hundred thousand dollar request that we spoke with the county and that the county feels comfortable that they would be a good applicant for the money this year. So I wanted to put that on there to tell you, like, last year we did the streetscape, we did the water tank rehabilitation program, and wood council support the library application this year for to finish the outside of the library. And that would mean that in 2016, I don't have any specific plans to apply for another grant this year, but if they applied, we would not be able to apply. And the application comes out this month, and they usually award it by June. I've been talking with Ms. Paluki and Jamie Bruton, and they would kind of spearhead the application and the grant, and the borough council would probably do a resolution at the next meeting, if everyone's on board with that, so we could go that route, so.
Because we don't have anything immediately, we don't know.
No, no, I mean, we're just trying to finish the streetscape up and we got behind. We have another grant from last year for the Bradford Avenue grant that we're gonna be doing, so we're, we're like hooked up right now, we can't take this one.
Let's do it.
Jack, that's one of the things we're doing, that bad, and the one neighborhood flooded, and I think you got grants and stuff to improve the storm drains, kind of funnel away a couple of houses were flooding over there. So we tried. We really do. All right, so-
Well, hold on. What's, yeah, what's the, the typical grant amount that we go for that we-
The maximum amount is five hundred thousand. The library is looking for just shy of two hundred.
So can we apply for the full five and they get two and we get the three?
We, we probably could, but right now we can't take on administratively anymore. I mean, we have Bradford Avenue, we're just finishing streetscape, this is all the same funding pot, so we probably wouldn't get another grant for us to pull down anyway because we have Bradford Avenue, we just got, we haven't even started that yet. So I think the chances to apply for a library would be better than for us to apply because we still have outstanding money that we haven't spent yet.
And who we going seventeen, two thousand seventeen?
It's up to us. I'm sorry.
So, so since we already have money in the, in the offers, then it, it would count against us to be at the end of the three?
It would, yeah, or not sure. So I mean, and I don't really have another project lined up in the year tomorrow, I'm willing to even apply for it, so, because we're not even starting on Bradford Avenue.
I'm sorry, Phil, you got a question? Just brush, sorry.
Yeah, it's a borough man, so we decide, we're, we're actually the applicant for county money, so even with the word, the borough is the applicant.
Okay, I mean, just with this, right now, it's like, well, gee, maybe we could use that money for a study, to start a study or something, but if that takes preparation work and works, yeah.
I, I can tell you, I sat at Mr. Castor's house probably ten years ago in a rainstorm on his sun porch, and just, I, I was like, I don't know, I don't have an answer for you. And that was ten years ago. Since then, we cleaned up the culverts, we've done storm improvements along the Port Drive, we put a new drain right there. I mean, it's, it's, it's hard work, but Tom said we're gonna have to dredge it. Right now it's against the wall, but hopefully that wall's gonna change.
Guys, we're kind of getting off the finger. We're talking about downtown library grant application. Anybody have a question, all the back to grant? If I, if you, if I just go with the world deposit, make me continue.
Yeah, we're gonna apply for it, yeah, for library, if you're okay with that.
Make a motion for world deposit.
All right. Next one isn't actually, they're not informational updates. We actually have Bishop Shanahan, we need a motion to approve the school board, that will have discussion. Do I have a motion to approve Bishop Shanahan High School's school?
No move.
Second, I have a motion and a second. Tom, in five thousand words of rush, he looked over this and it's on the back, it's a scoreboard that's basically, basically going anywhere it is, won't affect the neighborhoods, and it is gonna have some display on it that they will use for the games, advertising events and whatever at the school, am I correct?
Yes, the only, the biggest, it's about the same size, the biggest difference, it has a small pan on a video display.
Right.
And a video display that you, we do as council and authorize to.
All right, we'll start down, name, mic, and this is another question. Okay, down here, anybody have a question? Okay.
Yeah, I do. Yeah, yeah, I do.
Okay, go ahead.
You're saying that it wouldn't affect the neighbors at all, but if you have, what's the, it's a light source, you're gonna be having, it's a video display, is it things that are gonna be changing?
It's pretty far from the houses, and it's only used to be there at the defense in the stadium, not, not in the area.
And the letters change all the time, the numbers change, the grounds change, the time changes, everything changes on the board from beginning game to the end, so it's, it's not like it's-
Well, I think that, you know, I think that Bishop Shanahan, this has been, I'm, I'm just not pleased with the overall picture. I think with Bishop Shanahan, we've seen sort of a nibbling away at, you know, okay, we're gonna, we'd like this, but we'll never put in a, we'll never put in a stadium, they put in a stadium, okay, well, we'll never put in bleachers, they put in bleachers, we'll never put in a sound system, they put a sound system, we'll never put in lights, they put in lights. And now this is just one more thing that I, I would have to say, I, I think we, we need to, and in the, I'll also say that Bishop Shanahan has not been particularly a good neighbor in being responsive to the, the neighbors that are next to them. So I have a little bit of issue-
Excuse me, we're, we're on the scoreboard, let's kind of stay to the scoreboard.
I am staying on the scoreboard.
We'll address the scoreboard.
I am staying on the scoreboard.
And we, we don't wanna, we're not here to beat and batten, yeah, because you're on the scoreboard.
No, this is really relevant to the scoreboard.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you very much. This is relevant to the scoreboard, that I don't believe that we should be providing them with, with more when we, when we have not received good, good faith, goodwill from them in other issues.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion, a second all favor? Opposed?
Opposed.
Motion carries. Thank you, guys. Next one we wanna go over to, the same thing again, it's not the, it's not actually an informational update, it's the St. James School temporary slides, and I have a motion to approve St. James preschool. Second?
Second.
Motion is second. Tom, you just wanna go over quickly again, it's, it's a temporary sign.
Isn't this one people all preschools, what do you think, have a Sunday Eve?
We're gonna address it, so you guys get time to handle. But for now, Tom, do you see any problem with it? It's temporary, it's-
It's a nonprofit, and we don't allow it as a will, but for nonprofits, we do allow them provided council votes.
Okay, all right, it is, it is actually, can we have any questions? We'll start down the end with you, Ann.
Yeah, is this the time when we can hear from, I'm sorry, I don't remember.
We, we can, let's go down and ask the council questions first, and then if she feels as though you wanna come up.
Generally, we have the person present first at the council.
Yeah, I'm on this, would you like to talk please?
Yeah, you're doing a great job.
Thank you. Do you have a question?
So, I, I don't.
Thank you. Anybody else?
No.
You're okay. I mean, uh-
Um, you don't say where the signs are going to go.
Uh-
And I'm afraid of your answer. Because I'm afraid I'm gonna have to be against it. Go ahead.
Okay. Can we have one?
Excuse me, please, excuse me, please, I ask you about-
Where's the sign going?
I don't know. There's only-
Okay.
It's going in the right of way, which is why it's in front of you.
It's also in the middle of the word. Where does the right of way, where's it going?
It's out towards-
You wanna put it on the island with the Welcome to Downingtown sign, probably, that's my guess.
No, it's all the property. It's all their property.
It's all St. James.
What does it say there?
It says it on there.
They can't put it on.
Oh, wait a minute.
Okay, then I have no problem.
Wait, say what? What's happening?
The, the, the signs could be in public libraries on any streets.
Yeah.
With this approved, that's how the urn is as well.
Three days.
Yeah, well, where's it go?
They're putting six signs up, correct?
Yes.
Now on the St. James.
Uh, no, the application that we're making is for the signs to go at intersections. Ah.
Point of order, Mr. President, please, can we have her come up and tell council about it?
Stop interrupting.
How can we be, you telling us that we-
Thank you, I-
No, no, stop interrupting.
Thank you, your port order is-
No, you told me that we have to have-
Thank you, your port order is, thank you, thank you.
Stop it, stop interrupting me. You said that we have to speak among ourselves, you have questions, and nothing appeared from her, so if you-
Three times the port order is taken, okay? Thank you very much.
Would you stay?
Thank you.
It's different what you're saying, you're gonna do.
Thank you very much.
It's chaos.
We have a lot to talk about the preschool. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Did you come to meeting, you were like-
Yes, come on up, please, thank you.
Thank you so much for coming up, I do appreciate it.
I'm really, I'm really sorry, we're hoping to hear about it.
You know, I'm really sorry too. I apologize for these guys.
Go ahead.
Where, where are we going with the signs?
So the plan of where we would like to put them is in a few different locations around town to get it for Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. We're planning on taking them down on Saturday, but it's possible to come down until something like that.
Sunday, sure.
So where, the places we're thinking about putting them would be at the intersection of one thirteen and Pennsylvania Avenue. We would be thinking about putting them at the intersection of Wallace Avenue and Pennsylvania Avenue. We would be thinking about putting them at the intersection of Boot Road and three twenty-two Downingtown Pike on the way out of town.
These don't sound like borough property.
Yeah, Wallace Avenue, Pennsylvania Avenue, that would be right, either Roberts-
Does that, does that get pinned up right of way? You can't usually-
That's private property. They usually don't say anything about it.
I think before you, before you post them, you'll, you'll make sure that they are in Downingtown and they are live. It'd be nice if we knew. I, I'm sorry, I was under the impression that you were gonna put them at the church, but you wanna put them, I see the right of way, I put them at your right of way. I guess, Tom, you'd have to get together and make sure that they are in Downingtown, and they are on the right of way, so we don't make anybody mad, and I'm sure you'll agree to doing that.
That's perfect.
I'm sure you're not here to make anybody mad, you just wanna sell a few things for the church.
Right, we had called asking where they were supposed to be. This is my first year, so they put the signs up apparently previously in places where they weren't supposed to, and they were all disposed of, so we're just coming here for guidance and-
That's fine, and so they're gonna be, and you're talking half a dozen signs in different locations, and you would more or less work with Tom and make sure that they are in places that are okay. Right. I mean, like, you kind of want intersections or whatever. Phil, do you have any more questions on that?
Oh, I can talk, no, okay, guys, I'm here. Yeah, there's just that one problem, we have, we have this beautiful sign that the borough made that says Welcome to Downingtown, it's at the bottom of one thirteen and Route thirty.
Right.
Signs have a way, it, it tracks signs, I've taken signs down there for people having Signs have a way, it tracks signs. Taking signs down there for people having open houses and chats for it. I took down two signs last weekend that were handwritten from somebody that buys any house, any condition, handwritten sign. That was hideous. I just don't want, I really, there is an ordinance against signs there and I'd like to maintain that because I'm afraid if we allow an exception for even any worthy cause such as yours that it gives other people, say, "Well, what about us?" Other than that, I don't have any.
So, so you just don't like that one location? Is that what you're saying or is it...
I'd say within, anywhere within 30 feet of Welcome to Dantown sign, it's like, like Becky Ziger and Kevin have, they go down there and put flowers there and all that and we'd like to keep it looking nice.
I assure you, Phil, if you pour one in his yard, then...
You can.
And you can put one in my yard.
My yard is a pretty prominent corner, so we have realtors and open houses going in all the time and I don't like it.
I'm at this corner store in Pennsylvania, more Welcome to play up. It's a busy intersection. But, Tom, you would work with that and deal with that. Any more questions, Phil, you have any?
No, I'm good. Thanks.
Thank you.
Just one, I would, I mean, the sign is supposed to go in tomorrow, so, Tom, will you pour a water maker by there?
Get your best sound of it. Call him later. He's very talented. You can get one of them tomorrow and get one. I mean, if we prove it, I'll work with him.
I can't believe that.
I guess it's back to, we're, so now we're, we have a motion to approve this for placing, how many signs?
Six.
Six?
Up to six.
At locations that are in the borough's right of way.
Borough's right of way and Tom will work with you to make sure that they're positioned in line.
Okay. Only right of ways over by you.
Absolutely.
We can't improve anywhere else.
Yeah, we can.
Okay.
All right. Andy, you have any questions?
Yeah, I do. So the borough's right of way, I'm trying to figure out where they are. You said 113 and Pennsylvania, or are you just saying you're gonna, you're gonna help her choose different places? Like, it's not, not what was just presented now, but you're gonna find other places where they can go? I'm not fair on...
She mentioned Boot Road and...
322.
322. They're both state roads. So she has two choices. She could put them on private property with permission near that location. And that right of way, leave them in force. If she puts them on that right of way, it's out of my jurisdiction. So I'm not sure how to handle that.
Just go.
Yeah, we can't. And Wallace and Pennsylvania, I mean, there's, the only one I can think of is the little, the little pocket park there, or unless it's private, unless you want the private property. Was that, I know Counselor Day was saying he didn't want a, a Welcome to Dantown sign. And then the 113 and Pennsylvania.
Wallace, Wallace is our road going forwards. People, she puts them on the Milltown side in the area.
Right.
And Pennsylvania is our road.
Oh, yes. Well, 'cause, yeah, Pennsylvania and green, I guess, is where the little pocket park is, right? The Robert's Road.
No, that's, that's Wallace and Pennsylvania.
That's Wallace. Okay, so that's, and that's what she has, Wallace and Pennsylvania.
Yeah, they can go on any of the three corners, but we're at the borough's side.
And you'll help, you'll help position and work it out with her. I mean, are there certain intersections that you don't want it on, Andy? You wanna say?
No, no, I was just trying to find out where, I mean, I would have a problem with putting it on the little pocket park there, but it gets a lot of exposure, but I know Counselor Day didn't, didn't want that, and I understand. So no, that's, that's fine. So should we just withdraw the motion or, because otherwise, since, since Tom's gonna be working with her and then I'd happy to talk to that person.
I guess...
Can we amend it some?
I'd happy to talk to that person.
Let's just amend, let's amend it to, amend it or...
Check it out?
I made one.
Yeah, make a motion to position the times, signs with, with your hospital. Okay, we have the motion in the second. In the second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussions on the new one? Again?
No.
All right. All favor? Opposed? Thank you. Sorry to get me crazy. It's worth it. Go sell a lot of stuff. All righty. Words and commissions we're gonna go through here. The first one, come on up. We have all three appointments. We have Dave Madioli and we're all stored to the uniformed instruction group. Motion in the second to approve now. Can we appoint that? Second?
Thank you.
Okay.
That's good.
Questions? Okay, all favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
I do have a question. Did they send a letter saying, or did somebody talk to say that they, do they want to continue on?
We usually do most of them. Do accept it. If they don't, they usually get a little statement.
I know typically we have letters in there saying that they're interested.
Stay up. We'll reappoint. Motion to reappoint Pete Duke to the civil service commission. Motion?
I'm moved.
Second?
Second.
Questions? All favor? Thank you, guys. The next one, we have Memorial Park and Downtown Fund. Bruce Barone is on. We have a motion. Second?
Second.
Questions?
Have we put this out? Is there anybody else? Do we have our advertiser for this? Is there anybody else interested in this position?
We have an advertiser for it, but we, we had enough trouble getting three on there in the past, so, I mean, they've been doing a great job.
Yeah, they've been there.
Personal banking to the Downtown Fund. It's a good relationship.
Yes, very good finances. Any more questions? All favor? Opposed? Thank you. Is anyone here in board? We have Marie O'Connor.
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 We make a motion to appoint Marie O'Connor.
Would you like to make a motion to approve Marie O'Connor?
I just did. I made a motion to approve.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Can you hear me? Second?
Bill's second.
All righty. All righty. Like I said, Steve, we should push, try to find someone to advertise that. Maybe I'll have a website.
Yeah, we, we only got the letter from Marie and we probably should advertise.
All righty, guys. We'll do that.
You didn't pick Maria.
All favor? Thank you.
Thank you.
I think, is her name spelled incorrectly? Is it Maria O'Connor or Marie? I thought it was Marie.
It's Maria.
It's Maria. Okay.